Good evening. I will call this meeting of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees to order. Please rise. Trustee Clark, would you please give us a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose stance one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In the absence of Clerk Blau, Trustee Dropka has agreed to take the minutes this evening. So roll call of the board. Trustee Dropka?
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Let the record note that Trustee Dropka is in attendance. Trustee Heilandbach?
Present.
Supervisor Wilt?
Here.
Let the record note that our lawyer, Mike Hayes, is in attendance and Trustee Lumber is absent. Also, all of our visitors, if you could make sure that you sign in on the sign-in sheet before you leave, if you haven't already done so, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Let the record note that there is a quorum.
There is a quorum, and the clerk is absent for illness today. So, next order of business is the approval of the minutes of January 12th of the General Board of Trustees meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of January 12th.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Trustee Heilandbach to approve the minutes of the Township Board meeting of January 12th. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. The next order of business is the minutes of the February 2nd Committee of the Whole.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the Committee of the Whole for February 2nd, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Heilandbach, seconded by Trustee Clark, to approve the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting held on Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay. Are there any communications?
No communications.
Thank you. The next order of business is public comments. However, I think that everyone who is here, oh, no. Assessor Sitkowitz, do you have something for us? Didn't see you sneak in.
A little update, thank you very much. My name is Fran Sitkowitz. I'm here as Township Assessor. So, we are currently working on exemptions. The Assessor's Office announced last week a totally new procedure for exemptions. So, as Vice President of the Township Assessors Association of Cook County, the President and I have been busy trying to help all the other Township Assessors get on board with how to do this new procedure. So, we've been very involved in that with a lot of Zoom meetings. And so, so once we get everything up and running, we'll start reaching out more to our constituents who need to file first-time exemptions for homeowners, seniors, senior frees, disabled persons, pretty much anyone who's had these exemptions in the past are going to be automatically renewed, but for new people, it's a new procedure. So, so we're working on that, and then just getting ready for the next round of appeals, which will be starting soon as well. The first installment property tax bills are due March 1st. The Cook County Treasurer's Office did announce that they are waiving any late fees through May 1st. So, so that's good, helpful during these difficult times. And that's about it. That's what's going on in our office.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Assessor?
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Fran.
All right. Other than grants, are there any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll move right into our grant applications. Thank you, those of you who have come here to speak on behalf of your grant. And the first one on our agenda is access to care. Please identify yourself and then give us a brief overview.
Sure. My name's Kimberly Mertz. I'm the COO for Access to Care, and I'd like to thank you for having me here this evening. It's very nice to be in person socially distanced and around other humans. I've been the COO of Access to Care for a few years, but I've been with Access to Care this is my 31st year. They've actually been providing primary health care services to low-income uninsured and underinsured residents of suburban Cook County since 1988. So, I came on board shortly after that. There's three key components to access to care. The ability to see a doctor for $5, receive lab and radiology services for $5, and receive prescription benefits for $15 to $40. And those are the core pieces of access to care that have been there for 30 years. But in addition to that, we also provide behavioral health services through a clinical psychologist. We have an opioid risk management program in place, and our pharmacy contract includes all major pharmacies at this point. We've also been very fortunate to be able to cover diabetic test strips as well as flu and pneumonia vaccines for free. By far, our biggest challenge was the, and still is, the COVID pandemic. I think the Kaiser Foundation put something out mid-year that said there were 27 million people that lost job-related medical coverage nationwide. And 20% of them weren't eligible for anything else. So, the only reason they had benefits was because they had a job. So, with the unemployment being so high, we knew it was critical to provide relief to those that did not have anything, which is what Access to Care was meant to do. Provide benefits to those that are not eligible for anything else. So, we also made some modifications to our program. We started presuming eligibility, so we were allowing people three months enrollment and giving them time to get us all of their paperwork to determine their eligibility. And once we got it, we went ahead and gave them their full 12 months. But we got them on the program and gave them time to get us their paperwork. We also activated a prescription relief fund so that members could receive help with the cost of their copayments. Most people were able to get those copayments then for free. We suspended our enrollment fees, so for anyone trying to get onto the Access to Care program, there was no enrollment fee. It was free to apply to the program. We also extended our prescription plan, so for the purposes of social distancing, we allowed people to fill a 90-day prescription, but at a 30-day price, so that they did not have to leave their house and be worried about refills. We also activated a bilingual resource desk because so many people finding out about COVID and all of the educational materials were only in English. I think now we're seeing a lot of that with the vaccination process. If you're not literate on a computer and you don't speak English, it's very difficult to try to get an appointment for a vaccine. So, our resource desk is continuing to help not only our members, but anybody that calls our office with navigating that issue. And we are covering COVID testing too for our members, for people that are unable to find testing someplace else. We do not receive federal funding, and at this point, we still don't receive state funding, although that is something that we are trying to get. So, we really depend on the support of individual grants as well as the townships and the municipalities that we serve. Since our inception, we've served over 125,000 unduplicated individuals. And last year, I think there were just over 5,500 people that were served under Access to Care. There were 13 Riverside Township residents that received our benefits. And so, we're asking for a grant of $5,000, which would provide nine residents a full 12 months of medical coverage under the Access to Care program.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions? I see familiar faces from last year.
What is normally your enrollment fee?
The enrollment fee is usually $20, and it's a one-time enrollment fee, so if you re-enroll into the program, you don't have to pay it again, but it's an administrative fee.
And so, you said this $5,000 would support nine people, so basically, it's $550 a person?
Right. Our actual, I'm trying to see what our budgeted amount for 2021 is, but yes, it's just under $600 for an individual for a year. And that is unlimited, so as far as they pay a copayment to see their physician and a copayment for lab and radiology, but it is unlimited on an as-needed basis. So, there's no cap for that.
Other questions? Then what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we grant Access to Care the $5,000 grant they requested.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Heilandbach, to grant the $5,000 requested by Access to Care. Any other discussion? Any questions? Then, Trustee Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka, yes. Trustee Heilandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Okay. Our next grant request is from the Riverside Presbyterian Church for the Little Food Pantry. Again, please identify yourself and tell us, give us just a brief overview.
My name is Stephen Tooney, Riverside resident for 25 years and a member at Riverside Presbyterian Church for about 20. The Riverside Presbyterian Church family wants to thank you so very much for the help that we have received in the past. And you can see on our application that the amount of money that we have spent as an investment into the Little Food Pantry has really grown by 200% in the last year compared to 2019, and a large part of that is because of COVID-19. The need is just great. The amount of food insecurity that we've seen has just increased, and we are definitely making a difference in Riverside area.
Any questions?
This is their second time coming, or is it the first time? 2020 had, it says $1,000. Is this their second time during 2020, or are we in 2021 with this?
Let me double check.
Didn't we give them more for a refrigerator?
We bought a refrigerator as well. Hold on.
Yeah, and that's not on here. That's why I'm questioning. And your name again, sir, is?
Stephen Tooney.
Okay, Stephen.
Yeah, I'm taking the terrorist's place.
My only comment is you're doing a great job with this. This is wonderful. I would like to see you apply for grants with a bigger dollar amount because of what you need and what we can provide. If you give us, you know, a grant of $1,100, you know, more than likely, we're going to give you an $1,100 grant. That's it. But I think you can up it. You've proven, not only to this board, but to the township residents, that you're a viable place for people that really need the food, and we want to support that by all means.
Thank you.
So, I really think that that's something that you should consider in the future, okay?
So, okay, so this is the second one in this budget year. We made a grant in November of 2020 of $1,000, and then in 2019, we actually did two grants, two dates of grants, and on one, it was the purchase of the fridge as well as gift cards.
Oh, no, but then also on 8/19, we did $1,000?
That's what I'm saying. So, there were two different dates. So, in August, we gave $1,000, and in November of 19, it was a total of 497 and change because it was the purchase of the refrigerator plus Amazon gift cards.
And Supervisor Wilt, will we provide the gift cards for this $1,100? They're asking for it to go to Aldi, is preferred?
We will purchase those gift cards and present them. It's actually easier for us to purchase that.
All right. I make a motion that we approve the grant in the amount of $1,100 for the Riverside Presbyterian Church Little Food Pantry.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Heilandbach, seconded by Trustee Clark, to grant the $1,100 requested by Riverside Presbyterian Church for the Little Food Pantry in the form of Aldi gift cards. Correct? That's the way you're referring, or?
Would it be possible, instead of Aldi's gift cards, something that we just started working with, because we have some people at our church who would like to help, but they can't because they're homebound due to COVID? So, we had one member of our church actually pay for a one-year subscription because she can't go out to Aldi's to go shopping, to a company called Instacart. I'm new to that. Instacart is where you place an order at Aldi's, and then they deliver it to the church.
We can do that as well, as long as we're not making a check to the church.
No, no.
We can purchase that.
We don't want that, no.
I mean, it's still an Aldi purchase, but you want it for Instacart? And I don't know that it actually says here, it said Aldi gift cards preferred on the grant application, but?
Which was correct when I, but then we didn't know that this one person came forward with generous $200 that she paid.
Right.
And our pastor told me to please request Instacart.
Okay. So, then would the mover and second agree to that change?
I have no problem with it. It's a gift card, am I correct?
It's just a gift card.
Right. Right. It's a subscription for so much money.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
I don't either.
Okay. So, then I have a motion and a second for a grant of $1,100 in the form of an Instacart account or an Instacart line?
Gift card.
Gift card?
Yes.
It is a gift card?
Yes.
Okay. Very well. Is there any further discussion? Then would Trustee Dropka please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka, yes. Trustee Heilandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Doing a great job.
Our next grant application is from Aging Care Connections. Do we have anybody here this time? So, we are familiar with Aging Care Connections. They actually work with us quite a bit, including staffing of the CRC, of the Community Resource Center. They provide a lot of senior programs, senior services. We often refer people to them when we can't help them directly with anything that we have here. And so, you have the application before you. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the grant for Aging Care Connections.
I have a motion by Trustee Heilandbach. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Trustee Clark. Any further discussion? Then, Trustee Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka, yes. Trustee Heilandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, we have granted $5,000 to Aging Care Connections. And the final application tonight is from Best Buddies International.
Hello, my name is Adam Wilt. I'm the State Director for Best Buddies in Illinois, and I know most of the Township Board is familiar with our organization, but we work with people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We provide different services, but one of the main things that we have right here in Riverside Township is our friendship programs, which take place at three schools within the township. Those schools include Riverside Brookfield High School, Hauser Junior High, as well as Central Elementary School. Over the past year and last year, we were very excited to see two of those chapters were actually awarded with recognition at a statewide level for being two of the strongest chapters that Best Buddies has, both at the high school and elementary school level with Riverside Brookfield High School and Central. Obviously, the pandemic has caused some changes with how we approach our programs. We have shifted a lot of things to a virtual format, but we are continuing to provide support for our chapters. Right now, the Riverside Brookfield chapter has been a very strong one and continued to be strong throughout the pandemic. The Hauser and Central School ones have been on a little bit more of a hiatus, but we're hoping that very shortly here, they can be picking up some of the programming that they have as well. But we're very excited to continue to have those programs in the township and hope to expand to some of the other schools within the township in the coming school year ahead. I did include, it was not ready at the time of submission, but I did put each of your spots a document, which is the sponsorship document. That is actually how you have requested your support in the past, so there can be some recognition shown for our Friendship Walk. That is our annual event that promotes inclusion and friendship throughout Illinois. That event specifically is taking place in Chicago. Last year, we had a virtual event, and this year, we will be having a hybrid event, so that will consist of the physical event taking place on the rooftop of the old post office in Chicago. That's a brand-new venue, part of the delay for the documentation because we just got that finalized last week. But that event venue is new. It's three and a half acres, so we will have the ability to both social distance as well as to be in a safer outdoor environment. The event's set to take place on May 1st. We will also have virtual viewing options and opportunities for that event so that we can keep everyone included, and we will likely have that program in shifts. That is part of the reason for the long time span that's listed on the front of that document, just to ensure social distancing and safety.
Adam, are you asking for a sponsorship then of this $2,500?
So, in the past, that's how the support from the township has been listed and requested by the board. We are asking for $2,500 in support if you would like that to be in the form of sponsorship for this event. That is a way where we can recognize the township. The township has been listed on the back of the event T-shirt. During last year's event, it was a virtual program, and so there was a video clip from the township as well in our video that actually was part of our statewide event. But we are up to whatever is the pleasure of the Township Board.
So, if it didn't go for a sponsorship, then it would go to help these programs?
Both of those things support, yeah. That would support either way. It supports, actually, our Friendship Walk is our biggest fundraising event of the year that goes to support our chapters and our programs. So, both of those would be unrestricted funds in our eyes and support the organization. Really, the biggest difference is the opportunity for the township to be recognized from our end of things as well.
So, if we use this for a sponsorship, we would be recognized?
You'd be recognized there. We would still obviously have some recognition, but we don't have formal recognition channels for grants in the same exact way with like the event T-shirt on our website in correspondence to our participants. And so, I know last year, actually, there were some well wishes to some of our chapters, the local chapters of the township as part of the program, so different things like that.
And then, I have one other question. You use an abbreviation, ADD?
Yes.
Is that?
That is Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities.
Okay. I am flexible on whether we want to, well, I would like to grant this grant of $2,500, but I am flexible on whether we use it as a sponsorship or to support the other programs. So, I'll go with whatever.
I personally think we should stick with the sponsorship. It's directly there. That's what we've done in the past. I can tell you that Best Buddies, I never heard of it before Adam appeared here three years ago, and I've heard nothing but great things since and seen great things. But I think the sponsorship would be the way to go. That's just my opinion.
Anyone else?
All right. Then I make a motion that we grant Best Buddies $2,500 sponsorship for their Friendship Walk?
Correct, yes.
On May 1st in Chicago?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Heilandbach, to grant $2,500 as a sponsorship for the Friendship Walk of Best Buddies International in Chicago. Any other discussion? I think that the sponsorship also makes the participants in this township, the schools, probably, they feel more connected to it. So, as long as it all goes as needed.
Yeah, and all of those chapters, I believe, last year had teams for the event, and I anticipate they would do the same this year too, so that would be an extra opportunity.
Yes, you do get, I hear a lot of good things about you in your organization.
Appreciate it.
Okay. So, Trustee Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka, yes. Trustee Heilandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion passed.
So, the motion has been passed for $2,500 sponsorship for the Friendship Walk of Best Buddies to take place on May 1st. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam.
Okay. Thank you all. You're welcome to stay, and you don't have to if you have other places to be. Next order of business is the, I just wanted to affirm, because there's been such sporadic meeting and some of them were virtual and so forth, I want to confirm that the annual meeting will take place, the annual town meeting will take place in person in this room on April the 13th, which is a Tuesday. It's our regular board meeting night, and it will, by law, it may not start before 6:00 PM, so it is scheduled to start at 6:01 PM on April 13th. And if anyone has anything for the agenda, that needs to be turned in by March 1st. That is the deadline by statute. Okay. Just in addition to that, because last year, we did not hold an annual meeting, which was provided for in the Governor's Orders regarding the pandemic, any reports that would have been given then will also be given this year. So, there will be reports of two years given at this annual meeting. There were no issues presented before we canceled last year, so we kept hoping that we would still have it, but it will be a combined annual meeting. So, that is just a point of information for the community. The next item is the supervisor's report, and I'll just update you on things going on here. As of February 1st, we have all office staff back in the office every day. We had inquiries for building use, but with there still being limitations on occupancy, only small meetings and the Riverside Recreation After-School Programs with some limited participation, by the nature of what they're doing, it's a limited participation, so that has been allowed. The radio players would love to have audiences again, but they've been recording and posting on social media, and we are still trying to maintain the limits according to the state and county health departments. So, when we gave them the limit of how many audience members they could have, they said, "Never mind," because it would be about an equal number of cast members and audience, and that's hardly worth publicizing. So, the next order is the, or the next item is that we did receive the check in late January for $5,000 for the coronavirus relief funds, which, the grant that we applied for through Cook County. We have later in the program, and I apologize because apparently, we did not give you the quote, but I will read it to you then, but we did obtain quotes for the flooring for Room 3. Both quotes are from local flooring businesses as opposed to some, you know, TV advertised type, and they were both very close in their estimates for equivalent products and services. I got quotes for both carpeting and for luxury vinyl plank tile. Most of the people in this room looked at that during our Committee of the Whole meeting last week, and so on the agenda, I will be recommending that we go with the luxury vinyl plank tile from Crestway Classic Flooring. And the room is currently being prepared for painting. That's being done by our in-house custodial staff, and we have already received insurance settlement for it, and so we knew that we were going to have to pay part of the repairs, but those costs should be fully within our. but those costs should be fully within our, our, um, maintenance budget. Um, I'm actually hoping that the vinyl flooring will be more durable. And I'm especially concerned that, or happy that it will be more hygienic since we now also use that room for the delivery of food pantry bags. So there's a lot more traffic in there. If that flooring works out well, we will then look at, um, we've been budgeting for, but haven't spent the money to refresh the office. And then we will, if that is all that we hope it will be, then we'll take a look at getting a bid for that. We had two more grant requests that did make, did not make it to the, um, to the agenda this evening. And that was because we discovered there was an error on our website regarding the date that this would be considered. And so we didn't want to penalize. One of those grants actually came in, in plenty of time for this meeting, but it wound up in my spam folder that I didn't find until after the agenda was set. And then the other one, um, was all prepared to have it in, in time for that meeting. So anyway, I recommend that we consider both of those grants at our March meeting. Is there any objection to that?
No.
Okay. And then, um, we are gathering news for the next newsletter. So I hope if you have anything to, uh, share there or anything you would like highlighted, that you let us know. One of the things that will be featured is our Spring Shred Event. And that is scheduled for March 20th at the Masonic Lodge Parking Lot on Forest. That is actually the first day of spring. So, spring cleaning it is. Um, and then, as always, we get a lot of calls about matters that we don't control. And we try to redirect our residents to the proper places and try to help however we can. Most recently, many of those calls were about where to get the, uh, vaccine. And, uh, all we've been able to do is explain the procedures, give some numbers out. But, uh, we have not had any greater luck in obtaining appointments than anybody else out there. So that's the extent of my report. Are there any other things that you have questions about as a supervisor?
I thought the shredding event was March 27th. It's not, it's March 20th?
It's March 20th.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That's the date that I, we booked, so. Alrighty, then, um, we'll move on. Are there any trustees' reports? Uh, Trustee Highlandbach, do you want to start?
Sure. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, the Mental Health Board met and as promised, uh, we met with, uh, Chief Wetzel of the Riverside Police Department. Uh, he gave us a, uh, presentation on what he is looking for as far as a crisis intervention team, uh, in place. Uh, he's asked Representative Zaluski, uh, in a letter to help fund that. Uh, in the discussion, we found, I, we found out that, uh, 13 of his 15, I'm sorry, 12 of his 15 officers, uh, have CIT training, which is Crisis Intervention Training. And, uh, the other one is that there's only two of his 15 officers that has autism crisis training. So we are going to look at that in our budget, uh, meaning to see if we can help him out with that. We also, uh, the, uh, Community Resource Center Guide, uh, is in a PDF form. He has put that in every one of his squad cars. And it has also been put at the Communication Cent, uh, Center for West Suburban. So they have it right there. They can click on it, look up anything they would want to for the Community Resource Guide. Um, we also, as many of you probably got, or all of you should have gotten, is our Community Resource Center postcard that we sent out to the community, letting them know that we're here to help them. We have also ordered more of these cards and we're going to give them to the police departments so they can give them to the families and say, here, there's something that can help you. So they're going to contact them. I'm expecting a big influx of, uh, traffic to the Community Resource Center. I will absolutely keep you informed. The chief, uh, was very complimentary about the, uh, Resource Guide. He was, uh, uh, very thankful for the, uh, help that we've offered him. We will continue to work with the chief along with the other chiefs. Uh, we have Pillars, which is one of our core agencies, and our consultant, Dr. Trotiani, uh, working on a, um, like a questionnaire for the local police chiefs. What do you need? What do you have? What can we do to help? So I will keep you posted on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Trustee Dropka?
No report.
Trustee Clark?
Um, well, the good news is, um, the village has finally allowed filming again of non-essential things. So we will be filming four new exercise classes on March 7th. And, um, my, my question is, uh, do we want to? I had also arranged to have 12 other classes to be filmed and then we got shut down. Do you want me to continue with those? Four are yoga and eight? I could do four yoga and then cut the other, uh, to four other new ones with another, a different person besides Jerry.
Okay, we probably should consider, if, are we going to want to continue the televising beyond this? Or do we think, um, what, what do we feel is going to be the possibility of in-person classes?
Well, at our last meeting, or maybe it was the committee of the whole meeting, we discussed, we didn't think it would be before June 1st.
Okay. All right. Then let's, uh, probably plan to, um...
Go ahead with the, okay.
The additional filming.
Okay, great. And then I could, we can do something for the newsletter.
Yes, yes, let's put something together in there.
You know, because I want the yoga classes, once we do that, to be on Fridays.
Okay. That, that sounds good.
And then I'll check with the film crew for their schedule.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions of Trustee Clark? Thank you. I'm sorry, I've, I've been getting messages from the fire department.
I hope nothing.
A little distracted, sorry. Okay, um, then the mental health report we already had. So we're on to unfinished business. And the flooring bid we have from Crestway Classic Flooring is for, uh, Harbor Plank Vinyl Tile. That would be to take up and hallway old flooring, installation of the LVT flooring, um, provide for two thresholds, the floor preparation and skim coat, um, the base shoes around the room, the material and labor and delivery. And all of that comes to $2,712.74, which was less than a hundred dollars less than the other bid. If we had looked at carpeting, the, uh, carpeting cost from Crestway was considerably less than from DeSider. So, um, I would request a motion to approve the expenditure for the flooring through Crestway Classic Flooring, Inc.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee Clark, to approve the, um, the agreement with Crestway Classic Flooring. Any discussion? Then, Trustee Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka, yes. Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
There we go. And the next item is, um, in your packets, you had an update from Beds Plus, which, um, we always are happy to hear from those who receive grants from us. And they wanted to report to us their 2020 activities. And you have it there. It's really just for informational purposes. I do frequently refer people to them because it's not only for homeless shelter, but they, uh, work to prevent homelessness. And so they can get people into Section Eight housing and so forth. And finally, we have the warrants. Trustee Clark?
I make a motion that we authorize and ratify payment of the general warrant in the amount of $13,339.37.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve the general warrant for February 2021 in the amount of $13,339.37.
I have a question, uh, number 1630. What was, uh, was that just to like a closeout?
Yes, those were some services from December.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Then Trustee Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka, yes. Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next warrant? Warrants?
Uh, I make a motion at the board to ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, $1,763.54. Payroll, $18,080.69. Health warrant, $1,083.85. Grants for February, $15,000. General assistance warrant, $4,900. Township radio players warrant, $212. Food pantry warrant, $664.84.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept the, these warrants as listed. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Highlandbach, to approve the following warrants for February 2021. The utility warrant in the amount of $1,763.54. Payroll warrant in the amount of $18,080.69. Health warrant in the amount of $1,083.85. Grants warrant in the amount of $15,000. The general assistance warrant in the amount of $4,900. And the township radio players warrant in the amount of $212. Finally, the food pantry warrant in the amount of $664.84. Any discussion? Then Trustee Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka, yes. Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. There being nothing further on our agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Highlandbach, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.